The WebEx is now live.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening. I'd like to call the Order of the Cumberland County Board of Education's Regular Meeting, and we will start by doing the Pledge of Allegiance by Greg West and the invocation by Dr. Tara Jordan. So please stand if you can.
By allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May we bow our heads. Dear heavenly Father, we come before you with gratitude for bringing us today, together today. We are grateful for the opportunity to gather and guide our district. We are thankful for the gift of education and for the people who mark, who have make, who make learning possible in our school districts, our students, teachers, support staff, administrators, and family. We ask for your guidance and wisdom as we make decisions that impact the lives and future of our young people. Grant us the clarity of mind, unity of purpose, and hearts that are committed to anchored excellence. Protect our schools, foster a spirit of excellence in every hallway and every classroom, and help our district grow into a place where every child is able to go above and beyond. May this meeting be productive and the outcome serve the greater good for our district. May all that we do be done with integrity, compassion, and love for our school. We ask for your presence to be with us throughout this school year and for peace and understanding surrounding our district. In your name, we pray. Amen.
Now I would like to recognize individuals who frequently attend board meetings. Dr. Shabelle Godwin, Programs' Operations Specialist for Brad. Thank you for coming. Nancy McLeary, City View News. Thank you for coming. Cumberland County Association of Principals and Assistant Principals. Thank you for coming. District PTA. Thank you for coming. And are there any other elected officials or groups that may be present with us tonight? Next, we will recognize Rain Jones. Rain Jones is an eighth grade student at Anne Chestnut Middle School. She is a member of the Ladies of Excellence Club and Forensic Team, where she placed first at two tournaments and second at the district tournament in storytelling. She enjoys singing in the school and church choirs. Cooking, biking, and playing Roblox are some of her other hobbies. She plans to graduate from high school, attend a four-year college, and study to become an OB-GYN. She receives support through an IEP for reading, writing, and math, which helps her face challenges and continue to grow as a student. Rain, the floor is yours.
Good evening, Dr. Bracy, and members of the school board, guests, families, and friends. My name is Rain Jones. I am an eighth grader at Anne Chestnut Middle School. I started at Anne Chestnut since the start of seventh grade. I was born in the Bronx, New York, before I moved to Fayetteville. I live with my grandparents, my younger brother David, and my older sister Davah. Since transferring to Anne Chestnut, I joined the Ladies of Excellence team and the Forensics Team. Last year, I had a competition in storytelling. I won first place at two of the fourth competition and second place at the third competition. This year, I also plan out to try out for cheerleading. I love to cook, ride my bikes, and play video games like Roblox. Also, I like to sing at the chorus room at my school and at my church. My church name is The Healing Room Where Miracles Still Happen. I plan to graduate for, I plan to graduate high school and receive a four-year college and to go to medical school so to study to be an OB-GYN. I have an IEP, I receive special help for reading, writing, and math. However, I do not see this as a learning disability. I see this as an issue that will not stop me. I face challenges hard, wait, face challenges that the extra support I get from my school will help me grow and face hardship. This, this extra support I get will help me to be the best student I can be. Thank you for letting me share my story.
Thank you, Rain. Now I'd like to recognize Rain's family and school family. If you would please stand. Next, we have Gabrielle Quick. Gabrielle Quick is a senior at Massey Hill Classical High School. She is currently serving as Massey Hill's SGA Student Body President. She is involved in a little bit of everything at Massey Hill, serving as the Senior Speech Captain for their Speech and Debate Team, a member of their National Honor Society, President of Active Minds, a Mental Health Advocacy Club, an Ambassador of their Padilla Seminar Program, and a representative of Dr. Bracy's student voices. Outside of school, her hobbies include reading, roller skating, creating art, and spending time with her mom. After high school, she plans to study political science at a university specializing in humanities programs and hopefully complete her masters while finally heading off to law school. She hopes to utilize her educational opportunities to give back to her community and help craft a better tomorrow with equal opportunities. The floor is yours, Gabrielle.
Good evening. I would first like to thank Dr. Bracy, the Superintendent's Cabinet, the School Board, and guests for welcoming me here today. My name is Gabrielle Quick. I'm a senior, as well as the current Student Government Association President at Massey Hill. Massey Hill Classical High School offers rigorous classes, scholastic opportunities, and amazing arts programs. However, while I could go on about all the amazing academic and fine art opportunities, as well as the accomplishment of being ranked the number fifty-six high school in North Carolina by U.S. News and World Reports, I thought that I should speak about what gives Massey Hill Classical High School its classical design. Massey Hill Classical High School is one of fifteen schools in the United States to be nationally certified and recognized as a Padilla Seminar School. A Padilla Seminar emphasizes collaborative intellectual conversations, critical thinking, and fostering an attitude necessary to earn a living, be an active citizen, and pursue a meaningful life. As a Padilla nationally certified school, we engage in school-wide Padilla Seminars once a month in our grade-level advising, with additional seminars being integrated in class activities. Through Padilla Seminar, our student body has become more interconnected and provides, provided students with further chances to learn about and understand different perspectives and experiences. This has helped geared our school culture to be more open and collaborative, as to not only make a seminar, but also successfully execute one, takes a team of people willing to work together and be receptive to others' ideas. This past school year, Massey Hill Classical High School re-implemented the Seminars Student Ambassador Program. Ambassadors help create and facilitate the seminars our school runs. A unique opportunity that Massey offers its students to not just shape leadership skills, but skills to keep the ideas and the room flowing and stimulating through observation. Rather than participating in discussions, ambassadors observe and ask thought-provoking questions to students to challenge them to think and articulate their thoughts to the class. Padilla Seminar gives students the chance to have constructive peer-to-peer conversations with topics that are not traditionally taught. Favorite school seminars from last year were "High School Naptime" and "The Mandela Effect." As an ambassador, as an ambassador and facilitator of these seminars, I have seen typically quiet students flourish and speak their minds. The confidence found through participating in seminars has helped grow students into better leaders in clubs like SGA, NHS, theater, and speech and debate. The spirit of learning and growth fueled by collaboration that has stemmed from the Padilla Seminar Program has contributed largely to Massey's success at being one of the best schools in the state. Thank you.
Thank you, Gabrielle. I'd like to recognize Gabrielle's family and school family. If you would please rise. Last but not least, we have Paris Gillis. Paris Gillis is a junior at Algebe Wilkins High School. This is her first year serving in SGA, but leadership has always been a big part of who she is. Before coming to Wilkins, she attended Terry Sanford High School, where she was involved in several activities, including the Junior Varsity Volleyball Team, Ladies of Distinction, and she served as an athletic trainer for football and the men's and women's basketball teams. She was honored to be crowned Homecoming Princess and Miss Cageniality in the Miss FTS Pageant. Paris plans to attend Fayetteville State University after graduation. Paris, the floor is yours.
Hello. My name is Paris Gillis, and I am proud to serve as President of the Student Government Association at Algebe Wilkins High School. On behalf of my school, I'd like to welcome our new Superintendent, Dr. Bracy, and thank the Board of Education for inviting us to be represented here today. It's exciting to begin the 2025 and 2026 school year with so much opportunity ahead of us. Since September is Attendance Awareness Month, I want to speak briefly about something that impacts us all: chronic absenteeism, absenteeism. Last year, too many students missed days of school, which made it harder to keep up in class and stay connected to our school community. This year, I believe we can make a change at Wilkins. We want to focus on encouraging each other through peer-to-peer support, building stronger connections between students and teachers, and celebrating progress, not just perfect attendance. When students show up, we not only learn more, we feel like we belong. With your support, I believe this year we can create a cultural, a culture where every student knows showing up matters and they matter. Thank you for this opportunity to share on my behalf of the school. And always remember, every minute counts.
Thank you, Paris. Now we'd like to recognize Paris's family and school family. If you would please stand. All right. Thank all of you. Next, we're moving on to the Superintendent's Update. Dr. Bracy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, board members. Just over two months into my time here in Cumberland County Schools, I want to begin by saying how proud I am of the start we've had to this school year. Tonight, I'll share a brief update on key highlights, including the Premier Professionals Gala, which we held last night, back-to-school efforts, and the work ahead as we focus on increasing student achievement. We've had the opportunity to visit several schools, and it's clear our teachers are teaching, our students are engaged, and our educators are keeping learning at the center of everything we do. In other words, they're keeping the main thing, the main thing. First day of school, I joined principals, staff, community partners, and volunteers to cheer on students. As they arrived, smiles on their faces told the story of hope and also of possibility. I want to thank our principals, our assistant principals, and staff for setting the tone for a successful school year. Their leadership and commitment made a difference, have made a difference from day one. Just last week, right here in this boardroom, we hosted nearly one hundred faith leaders for breakfast. It was an inspiring morning. Many of them are already investing time and resources into our schools, and I'm confident that many more will step up as a result of that amazing meeting that we had here last week. Over the past two months, I've had the opportunity to meet with so many groups: custodians, teachers, principals, assistant principals, met with our data managers today, parents, mentioned meeting with faith-based leaders, community partners. What excites me the most is seeing so many people working together to give our students the bright futures that they surely deserve. Been learning a lot from those conversations. I want to keep that conversation going. That's why we're hosting Bracy on Board Community Events later this month. September twenty-fifth at Southview High and September thirty at Pine Forest High, both from five to seven p.m. These events will be open to everyone across the county. The atmosphere will be celebratory. We'll have food, music, and student performances, CCS resources, and giveaways while supplies last. We'll also be launching our Family Engagement Cruiser, which will take resources directly into our neighborhoods and also our communities. I'll share a short message at each event, but more importantly, I want to hear from our stakeholders. QR codes will be posted around the venues so family, staff, and community members can share their input directly. I'll also be moving through the crowd, connecting with folks, listening to their hopes, concerns, and ideas to make, help me make CCS a stronger school system. These events are about listening, learning, and building stronger partnerships together. During September, we take time to recognize several important observances. We began with Labor Day, honoring the American labor movement and the contributions of workers across the nation. This week, we celebrate National Arts in Education Week, shining a light on the vital role the arts play in helping students grow and thrive. We also pause to remember Patriot Day on September eleventh, a national day of remembrance for the lives lost during the tragic events of nine eleven. Other observances this month include Attendance Awareness Month, which reminds us that every day in school matters, Pursuit of Success, and Suicide Prevention Month, as we raise awareness and make sure resources are available for those who need them most. We also acknowledge Sickle Cell Awareness Month, standing alongside families impacted by this disease, and National Hispanic Heritage Month, celebrating the rich history, culture, and contributions of Hispanic and Latino Americans in our schools and community. Last night, we rolled out the red carpet for our Premier Professionals Gala. Just what an amazing event, honoring the educators and leaders who truly embody excellence in Cumberland County Schools. Congratulations again to our winners, Dr. Latricia Allen, Principal of the Year, Dr. Caitlin Lovett, Assistant Principal of the Year, Manziel Spencer Jr., Teacher of the Year, and Amber Altrich, Beginning Teacher of the Year. These Premier Professionals remind us that while their roles differ, the mission is the same: raising student achievement, shaping brighter futures for all of our students. It was an inspiring evening, and I am deeply grateful to our board members, staff, and community partners who were able to join us last evening. Great leadership is the foundation of every strong school system, and tonight, we highlight Cumberland County Schools' Internal Auditing Director, Christine Jumelon. Her leadership and expertise help keep our district anchored in accountability and success. Take a look at the screen to hear Christine share her CCS story.
Hi. My name is Christine Jumelon, and I'm a graduate of Cumberland County Schools, Pine Forest Trojans. Cumberland County Schools laid the foundation for my career academically, artistically, socially, and emotionally. Cumberland County Schools, to me, was so pivotal in my success because of the stability and then all the opportunities it gave me as far as cheerleading, the band. I've actually taken both of those in addition to the academics, and I've used them to serve our community. One of the most memorable things for me was trying out to be a Pine Forest Cheerleader. This is a little construction paper number that they created, and I've kept on to it all these years. Cumberland County Schools care so much about its students that they have a mentoring program. And so I've also volunteered for the mentoring program, and I'm working with a student at a school, just encouraging her to get that degree, keep working towards the finish line. So I do know that it's more than just getting a grade, that it's nurturing the individual as a whole person.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And before I conclude my remarks, I need to acknowledge the state accountability results that were released last week. While we saw gains in growth, graduation rates, and several subjects, we also saw an increase in the number of schools in this school system designated as low-performing. Let me be clear: this is not where we want to be, and it is not where we will stay. Every minute, every second, every interaction with the student matters, and we must treat it that way. Our students deserve the best, and I believe with the talent and dedication in this school system, we will deliver better. Tonight, you will hear from, more from Kim Nash, and in the weeks ahead, our team will bring forward a clear plan of action to accelerate academic improvement. And I'm confident that if we stay focused, hold ourselves accountable, and keep the main thing, the main thing, which is student success, next year, we will be telling a different story. Madam Chair, thank you for the time. That concludes my report for this month.
Thank you, Dr. Bracy. Next, we will move on to the public forum. Welcome to the public, no.
Three point oh two.
Oh, I'm sorry.
All right. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
So I am here, as Dr. Bracy said, to share with you our data release and the information pertaining to that. So our data, it is evidence that supports our strategic priorities by highlighting our areas of progress, but also those opportunities, as Dr. Bracy has pointed out, are opportunities for continued growth. So we are gonna jump into first just a review of what the accountability model holds, what that looks like. So with the North Carolina Accountability Model, as you see from the screen, you, on the left side of the chart, there are the measures that are included in the elementary and middle school, measures for the accountability, and then on the right side are the high schools. So there are definitely some, some commonalities between the two. We've got reading, math, science, and then English learner progress counts, provided there are at least thirty students who are English language learners within the school that, that count towards that accountability model. And then for the high schools, they do have the opportunity to add a few more things in there. They get to add in math course rigor, cohort graduation rate, and the ACT or ACT work keys, which on the school accountability model is referred to as AWA. And then for all schools, growth is a factor in there as well. For elementary and middle, it is reading, math, and science growth. And for the high school, it is just reading and math growth. So those are the components of the model. There is a sample at the bottom that shows that the school achievement counts for eighty percent of that calculation, and school growth counts for twenty percent. So just a quick review of what that model consists of. So jumping into the performance results, we are going to look at reporting proficiencies on those subjects that are listed. So elementary and middle, it's reading, math, fifth and eighth grade science. And then for our high school, the, the portion that constitutes the, the composite or the reporting composite that we'll look at are the biology, English two, math one, and math three scores. So overall, the district performance composite, this is all of the EOGs and all of the EOC courses combined across the entire district. This year, our composite did decrease slightly by one-tenth of a point from fifty point nine to fifty point eight. And breaking those numbers down, we've got them broken down a couple of different ways for you on, on these two slides. The first is by ethnicity and the subgroups within the ethnicity with a four-year comparison shown in the chart on the right. And then the graphic representation with the bar graphs on the lower left. And as you can see, our, again, our overall district remains steady, dropping a tenth of a point. Our white, multiracial, and American Indian students saw small gains. Our Asian students, who make up approximately two percent of our student population, decreased slightly, but they still remain our highest performing subgroup. And our Black and Hispanic students remained relatively stable, staying within two-tenths of a point from their previous year. So again, this, the data highlights our opportunities to address those ongoing achievement gaps. The next slide breaks this down by our additional subgroup comparisons. These are the ones that the state pulls out with their data points. So you can see the different areas of males versus females. For example, students with disabilities versus non-students with disability. So it shows again that most of our subgroups maintain consistent proficiency, proficiency levels with just some minor changes here and there. Our students with disabilities and English language learners, they experienced larger declines of one point four and one point three percentage points respectively. So just some, some highlights within the data, and I apologize, this slide kind of got reversed in there. But just for district proficiency, just a summary overall, again, we decreased from fifty point nine to fifty point eight. Almost half of our schools, forty-eight point seven percent, increased their composite proficiency score, so everything overall. Proficiency levels increased in nine out of the nineteen state mandated assessments. We did have seven schools that increased their composite proficiency by five percentage points or more. So we did want to recognize those schools. On the slide above, you'll see those listed. The highest composite increased at nine point five from Ramsey down to the Lloyd Almond had an increase of five, as you see on the screen. So we did want to recognize those improvements from those seven schools. Taking a closer look at the elementary and middle school performance results, first combined. So this is all of grades three through eight combined. So you see the reading, math, and science for the last four years at the top of the chart, and then the graph at the bottom highlights this year. For reading and math, we did see a slight increase when you put the three through eight all together, and we will break this down. While modest, the results are, are encouraging, but again, also provide a context for improvement in all of our schools. For science in grades five and eight, that data is, is combined there, and you see that there is a large decline of seven point nine. So proficiency drops are common with the new assessment that we have that are aligned to those updated standards. But again, we do recognize the need for continued support and growth in this area as well. Breaking this down a little further, these are just the elementary grades. So this is grades three, four, and five only for our elementary schools. So there were declines in all levels of our, our math, as we've said, in fifth grade science and in third grade reading. In previous years, however, our schools did show steady growth in this, this area and all of those areas. This year, we see that shift. District teams are carefully, and have been carefully analyzing those results, pinpointing specific areas where additional support and professional development will be most impactful. So we are already working and have been working on this, this information to point us in the right direction. And again, the bar graph on the right just shows the comparison for those four years, with green being the most current. Excuse me. In our middle schools, when you pull apart a data and you look at just the middle schools, what we did see is an increase in all areas, all grade levels for reading and all grade levels for math. Our middle school math maintains that greater than ninety-five percent proficiency. And again, we do have that, that decrease in our science scores. Again, that is with the implementation of a new assessment. So with the improvements, again, we're seeing some movement in there. Not as much movement as we would have liked to have seen, but there is some movement, and we do remain focused on strengthening and streamlining, streamlining those supports to ensure that our schools and our students have what they need to succeed. So we did want to take just a moment to recognize some substantial areas of growth within our schools. Our, in reading, and this is just in our elementary school, our largest areas of growth range from an increase of eighteen point seven in the third grade reading for Manchester, all the way up to thirty-three point three percentage points at Beaver Dam in fourth grade reading. In mathematics, the increases range from twenty-two to thirty point six percentage points. And then in science, even with the new test and the new standards implemented, we had increases from three point three and our highest increase of thirteen point one at JWC Brook. In our middle schools, we want to follow suit with that same thing and just recognize the hard work that is, has there, was there within those schools this past year. Our reading for middle school, our highest increases range from nine point one to fourteen. In math, from thirteen point four to twenty. And we did have two of our, our middle schools that did increase in their science by point five and point nine. So again, even despite those, those new assessments, we did see some of those increases. Shifting to our high school, looking at their assessment data first. You can see the assessment data there. Scores are reported, as we said, for biology, English two, math one, and math three. So English two showed just a slight increase of point one, but math three showed a significant increase of eight point seven percentage points. And this is consistent with what was seen across the state of North Carolina with an increase in math three of eight point eight percentage points. eight percentage points across the entire state. Proficiency did decline in both biology and in math one. Looking at the additional high school measures, there are four areas that we examine when it comes to the state accountability model. The first is math course rigor. Math course rigor is the percentage of, of seniors who successfully complete math three, and this percentage for our district decreased from ninety-four point two to ninety-three point one. All of our other areas show gains. To put in context, just to, um, put everything out there for context purposes, the ACT, if you remember several years ago during the pandemic, that, um, University of North Carolina Admissions Board raised their admission standards from a seventeen on the ACT to a nineteen, and we saw proficiencies drop at that point. What they did this year for the ACT is they dropped that standard from a nineteen back down to the seventeen. So that jump to a fifty point nine is expected because they did drop that, that baseline number back to a seventeen, but for context purposes, I did put in the yellow box that we did increase just in our average score overall. So even without that change, there were some increases in our ACT performance. Excuse me, our workplace readiness assessment work keys increased, and our AWA, which is the percent of our seniors who scored a nineteen or higher on the ACT last year, or a silver or better on their work keys this year. And then the final measure for our high schools is the cohort graduation rate, and once a student enters high school as a ninth grade, they're assigned to the, or, in whichever grade it is, they're assigned to their appropriate cohort, where they're expected to graduate high school in four years. The only way a student can be removed from the cohort is by one of the four areas in the right. So given the high transancy in our community, sometimes it is a challenge to maintain that documentation for students who come in and out of our district, but this year, thanks to the dedicated efforts of our teachers, our counselors, our data managers, administrators, members of our district support team, we were able to increase the district graduation rate to an eighty-six point three. And then the next slide shows that breakdown by individual schools. So ten of our high schools did increase. We had four of our high schools that maintained the graduation rate above ninety-five percent, and four high schools experienced decreases. So as a district team, we are continuing our work already with our schools to ensure that we can improve those graduation rates. And then our high school highlights. We had increases in biology as much as nineteen point five, in English two as much as twelve point four, and in math, both math one and math, or, sorry, this math one and math three are together, I apologize in this section. We did increase as much as twenty-eight point nine at Ramsey Street High School. So we wanted to recognize those, those particular schools for those significant gains. And then also looking at gains in the other high school measures, you can see, um, the gains that we had there from our ACT to our AWA to our math course rigor, all of those, the top gains are listed there for your review. So the last component is growth. Excuse me, I'm so sorry for all my coughing here. Growth is measured using EVOS, which is the Education Value Added Assessment System. The system is used across all of North Carolina, plus several other states. It collects the student data, analyzes, and then measures academic growth, and provides that in a numerical value for us. So this year in our district, seventy-eight percent of our schools did meet or exceed growth, and you can see the breakdown there, eighteen exceeding, forty-six met growth, and twenty, I'm sorry, twenty-two percent, but eighteen also did not meet growth. Our goal is for all of our schools to meet or exceed growth expectations, and as Dr. Bracy mentioned, we are gonna continue our work. These, this is a list of schools that did exceed growth. I do wanna highlight, specifically highlight, two of those schools. Pine Forest High School led the district in growth this year, earning a maximum converted score, growth score of a hundred, and they ranked thirteenth in the state for growth. They previously ranked in our district second for the past two years, and this year, they did move up to first place in growth, um, ranking thirteenth in the state, that is out of approximately twenty-seven hundred schools. So that is very impressive. And then also Westover Middle School. Westover Middle School had our second highest growth, and they were thirtieth in the state for growth, out of approximately twenty-seven hundred schools. So definitely notable achievements for those two schools, and we did have several others, but those were our top two, just to highlight. Absolutely.
Does Westover middle feed into Pine Forest?
No, they do not.
They don't?
No, they feed into Westover High School. Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. And then just to recognize the schools that met growth, they are listed here for your review as well. We did have forty-six on that list that did meet growth. So all of the measures that we've looked at, the academics, the growth, those combined to the school performance grades. So looking at our school performance grade summary, we can see that we now have five A schools. There are some shifts in the middle with our Bs and Cs. We do have twenty-eight D schools, and we did have one school fall into the category of an F school. So again, we, we acknowledge the shift, and this shift, again, further underscores the need for our additional significant supports across the district. And while we recognize that need for those additional supports, I think it's also important to recognize our seven schools who did improve their letter grade, their performance letter grade. So you can see them, Lloyd Almond moved from a D to a C, Beaver Dam moved from a B to an A, Rockfish from a C to a B, and Chestnut from a D to a C, Pine Forest D to a C, Westover Middle D to a C, and Douglasburg High School D to a C. So those were our seven schools that did raise their performance, school performance letter grade. And then the final segment of the data release that we'll share this evening refer, is regarding our low performing schools. A school is designated as low performing if they receive a school performance grade of a D or an F, and their growth score is either met or not met. So those schools, once identified, they develop a comprehensive improvement plan, and they receive intensive support through our PACE model, our Performance Accountability Support and Empowerment Model, which you will hear more about. As Dr. Bracy alluded to, you will hear more about that in the coming weeks. So last year, our previous list of low performing schools, there were fifteen schools on that list, twelve elementary, two middle, and one high. So from that list, these four schools were removed. Lloyd Almond, Pine Forest Middle, Westover Middle, and Douglasburg High School. All of which you saw on the previous slide, not only did their growth improve, but they also improved their school performance grade, and they moved from a D to a C. So it was not just an exceeding growth that moved them off of the list. So just, just wanna take a moment to recognize and celebrate those schools for moving off of the list. And again, as Dr. Bracy mentioned, we do have, for this year, we do have twenty-seven identified low performing schools, underscoring that need for the focused and intentional support across our district. Of these schools, eighteen did meet growth. Eight did increase their overall achievement scores. Seven improved their numerical value of the school performance grade. However, these gains were not prominent enough to keep them off of this list. So while many of the, the results shared tonight were not what we had aimed for, we are confident that our newly altered structures, its supports currently in place, will help us make significant progress with our student achievement in the year ahead. And again, more details on this academic support plan will be shared with you in the coming weeks. Yes, ma'am.
Do you know the reason for the drop in math in elementary?
I, I honestly, I do not. I can't pinpoint one thing that, that would tell me a reason why we have that drop in math.
Um, I have an, uh, another question.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, you know, with the accreditation, one of our, well, what it says is negative trends and challenges that we have, especially in math, where students, uh, perform below grade level proficiency, and the achievement gaps persisted among various subgroups, including students with disabilities and black students. So I've been told time and time again when I ask about this, well, we're in discussion. Do we have things in place to make sure that we are trying to close this achievement gap with these subgroups?
So what I can tell you from the, from the data lens and the data perspective, is that I know that our, our support teams have dug into those various subgroups. We only looked at a small piece of those subgroups here tonight, but when we talk about our district support teams drilling in, they have all of this data by individual school and by individual teacher, so that when they're working with school ABC, they have the results from each one of those teachers within that, and even down to individual students, so that they can identify early which students need support across the board, but also targeting students to make sure that they have those supports within those specific subgroups to move our schools in that, in that way. Um, now what, and that's, you know, from the data perspective, I can tell you that, that they do dig in. We spend time with our curriculum specialists, with our school support staff, even with our student services. Everybody digs into this data to find those things, and then they work towards putting those pieces in place to raise the subgroups and raise the achievement for all of our students. And I know that, um, I believe it's at the next curriculum committee that you guys will hear more in, more information in detail about this academic support plan that all of the departments have kinda come together to build.
Because we constantly hear that we're digging into the data, we're digging into the data, but we're not seeing anything, any progress.
And so, like, from, and I can only speak from the data lens, because I used to be in the curriculum and instruction side of the house and, and really digging in and seeing pieces of those, but in, in the role that I'm currently in, while we do meet as a, as a whole, to be able to, to discuss the intricacies of that plan would need to come from the, the curriculum side, where they're actually working in that plan on a day-to-day basis. So, um, I don't want to give you misinformation because I only hear pieces of that, that's not a piece of our day-to-day work from the Data Accountability Office.
Thank you. Anyone else have questions? Ms. Musker?
It seems strange that, um, so many of our schools are exceeding growth and everything, and yet we still have low performing students. Something strange about that to me.
Well, and, and...
Doesn't mean that the plan that, um, someone used to come out of low performing, it, it was just willy-nilly, they didn't, didn't write it down or have it or something, or in the needs assessment, they didn't go deep enough in the needs assessment to find exactly what is needed at that particular building.
Well, I think, I think when you talk about the different, different growth models, and, you know, the fact that we do have, we have, a lot of those schools on our low performing list did meet growth. They did improve their performance composite, but what didn't happen is they did it, those numbers weren't high enough to get them off of that, that list. Um, so, you know, when it, when we talk about a plan, yes, I believe, and in my conversations with principals and, you know, some of those that came off the plan, I know that, you know, they've got it and they pushed, and they have a record of what happened within their school, but what I also know that whenever you're looking at, at individual children, and, you know, you know, and a lot of you from working in the schools, children are different, yes, they all learn, yes, they all move, but what motivates, one student may not motivate another. So I think that those plans, even though, yes, there is a skeletal plan, they do have to be tweaked for individual schools to push them beyond enough to get off of that list. And with our current model, the current model, the way the school accountability and the low performing schools work, is that even if you meet growth, so you're meeting and you're moving those children equivalent to a year's worth of growth, you could still be on that low performing list unless you exceed. So a lot of those schools are moving their children forward, we're just working to find a way to increase that proficiency and also to move them forward at a higher pace.
And you, you finished this, Ms. Gray. Go ahead.
I, I did want to, uh, ask, uh, one more thing with, um, I noticed that in the, um, data, it has, uh, African-American students, the lowest each time. So do we have anything different to address the African-American student and how they learn and, uh, receive information rather than the whole group? It seems to be something happening in there that they're not getting to those children. So do, do we have anything in place that will, um, address that need?
And so again, I'm, I'm gonna have to refer back to that plan that you guys are gonna hear more about.
Those are good questions.
Yeah, they are.
But the questions will be addressed in detail on the twenty-fifth at your curriculum committee meeting. Those are all great questions.
Yeah.
But typically, people in Ms. Nash's role, they just, they present the data, they help us understand what the benchmark, the benchmark assessments are leading us to, what we need to focus on. Typically, people in her role do not, um, what's the word I'm looking for, do not design the plan for accelerated academic improvement, typically, unless this is different than anywhere I've ever been. They just report the data. They help us have a, a great understanding of the data, but those are great questions, and I want you to bring them all on the twenty-fifth.
Now, the math one scores went down. Does that, um, encompass all of the students who did math one, the AG students?
It, that, that score for math one, there are two separate scores reported for math one, the, the eighth grade, the middle school math one is reported separately. So that greater than ninety-five percent on the middle school slide, that was just for those eighth grade students, and then the other number that did decrease, that is anyone who takes math one from grades nine through twelve.
Dr. Jordan?
Um, may, maybe Dr. Bracy can help, uh, answer this question. So when we, we meet on the twenty-fifth, you're gonna discuss the, uh, ESL students, also their population?
Discuss whatever you want to.
Okay, I'm, I'm just, I'm, I'm just asking, because I noticed that they're down, and usually our Asian-Americans are the ones who, um, are usually up in, in most states, and it's just odd to see their numbers, I mean, keep decreasing. So is that due to our, uh, not having the ESL teachers, or i, or is that due to us not having, I, I'm trying to find the disconnect, and I, and I know you might not answer that, but I'm just seeing, I, I'm, as we go forward.
Well, and the, the reason behind it, I, I can't pinpoint again, but what I can say is when, whenever you look at an ESL teacher, the ESL teacher, their responsibility is to teach the English language. So they don't teach the contents in the math one, or the English two, or the biology, their, their, their role and responsibility is to teach the children to be proficient within the English language. And they do have the ESL students similarly to those who may have a five oh four, or, um...
And, and that's why, that's why, that's why I'm asking, because if you have a, because usually they have a small group setting or different things like that in ESL, um, in their ESL, in the ESL program, and we still seeing a decrease in their numbers. So I'm just, um, so hopefully we'll be able to see on the twenty-fifth, what is that disconnect, because right now there, somewhere there's a disconnect, and I understand that ESL teach the language, but then they also pushes into the classroom to make sure that they're able to, uh, uh, articulate what's going on in that, in that program. So with that being said, that, they do kinda feed into our program. So, uh, uh, thank you, um, Madam Chair, thank you, Mr. Bracy, so we can get that information.
My question is, the seventeen schools that we celebrated last year for coming off of low performing, how many of those now return to low performing, and are we addressing what? How many of those now return to low performing and are we addressing what through the data needs to be done in those cases?
And that is a great question, Ms. Warner. I don't have that number right off the top of my head. I can get it for you. But what I will say is that a lot of the schools that came off of the low performing list last year came off because they they exceeded and they exceeded that growth and that's what took them off. The definition says that they are a D or an F and they, they to be low performing, you're a D and F or you meet or you do not meet growth. So automatically, if you exceed growth expectations, you're no longer a low performing school. So several of our schools did come off of the list last year when we dropped down to the fifteen because of that exceeded. And I can provide those those numbers to you guys so that you can have that. And I apologize for not having that tonight.
Thank you.
I tried to anticipate some questions and that wasn't one of them, so I'll get it to you though, I promise.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Could you please explain E V O S for me one more time? Because isn't that like a projection?
It is. There are some projections.
That's supposed to happen?
Yes, ma'am.
Could you explain it to me as well as to the public and then I'll ask my question?
I will definitely do my best because E V O S is extremely complicated.
Okay.
Um, I'll be honest with you. I I'm gonna do my very best. So E V O S collects data from all of the assessments across the entire state. For every student that tests, it's all dumped into the data. And E V O S basically tracks students and their performance. So for example, if you and I perform similarly on our assessments, then what they do is they they kind of track that and they take it into account. And they work towards if, let's say, you're a year ahead of me or well, I put myself a year ahead of you.
Don't put it.
Yeah, I'm a year ahead of you. And so I'm working at that path. You have a similar testing and they take everybody like me that's similar to you and they build that projection and they build that that thing that says that based on our data, all the students that were like you, that scored like this should follow suit. And they're basically, their testing should fall within this particular area. And that's what they look at. And then when we all test again or when you all test again, they look at how did all of the students that were like you in terms of your testing history, did they all perform at that same rate? Or did you outperform? And then that kind of guides what goes on with the E V O S behind the scenes. And that's how they do the met expected exceed. So E V O S cannot be measured in growth, or sorry, E V O S, growth can't be measured until after the test because they look at it and say, everybody should have gone here. So basically, if if you go further, if everybody goes further than that, well, then everybody's the same. We are kind of at that met level. But if this group went this far, but these schools did even more, they exceeded what was expected of them. And then everybody does this, but this group of schools doesn't quite do as much, then they don't meet growth.
So every time they do a benchmark or test whatsoever, the E V O S is there, right?
Only for state assessments at the end of the year.
Okay.
So none of the formative assessments, none of the benchmarking, none of the check ins, none of, none of that data goes in. The only time data goes in is for a state assessment. For example, our third graders took the B O G three, the beginning of grade for reading today. That data will be fed into E V O S.
Okay.
Okay, that's the first time data is fed into E V O S for children for the purposes of this. Okay, and then so they'll use that and look at at for third graders for reading, they'll look at that at the end of the year and use their calculations behind to see what those measures are.
Okay, so it's only at the end of the year?
Yes.
Okay.
Did you have something to add to that?
I was gonna say, and gro- their growth is measured by their skill score for the B O G and where they'll be at the end of the year for that skill score at the E O G. Am I correct?
It depends on how everybody else does on that test, but it it's similar. And a a lot of our schools try to use that model, but there there's a lot of stuff that goes into that growth aspect of it. A lot of things and factors and it it's the analogy that I'd like to use is if we all got on the line and started running a race and we time ourselves and I, we all go home and say, we're gonna come back and do this again in two months. And I train and train and train and I know I'm faster. So one would think logically that I grew. But the way E V O S is measured is what if we all get on that same line and we all take that same race and everybody took two seconds off of their time? None of us exceeded, we all just met growth because we did it at the same rate as everybody else. So it's really a measure of how you're doing compared to everybody else. And so, you know, if we go to that same race and let's say that the majority of us took two seconds off of our time, but, you know, Ms. Bell took four seconds off of her time, well, she exceeded because she grew at a faster rate than everybody else. If I only took a half a second off of my time, then I didn't meet growth because I did not improve at the same rate as everybody else. So it's kind of a comparative model and it is very confusing. There is a book on it and um, as a person with a degree in math, I've read the book. I've looked at the book and I'm still going, wait, what? I mean, there's there's a lot to it, but um.
It's complicated.
It is, it really is, but it is um, it's a very reliable model.
Thank you.
The graduation rate, um, can you speak a little bit on that? Do we send the information to D P I or they send it us?
So what the what happens with the graduation rate is that they record, basically, they record every time one of these young ladies enters ninth grade, they enter in the year, I'm gonna use two thousand because the math is easy for my brain this evening, it's late. I'm supposed, they're supposed to graduate in four years. So their graduation date, because we're gonna make it simple and not use the school year thing, let's say they they're supposed to graduate in twenty twenty four. Well, the state has a record of when they entered ninth grade. If they don't go through and show as a graduate in twenty twenty four, the simple version and the simple way to to do this is that there's a flag. There's a flag that says that this child did not graduate in the four years that they're supposed to graduate. So basically with those flags, we have to go back. And if a particular child did not graduate, we should as a district have documentation to say, well, they didn't graduate from school A B C D because they transferred to Hawaii. Or they didn't graduate from school A B C D because of whatever reason. They they went to a homeschool. Or, you know, unfortunately, it happens, they may have passed away at some point during their high school year. We have to maintain documentation on all of those things. And then we submit that documentation to the state. And there's certain codes that go with different reasons to have them removed to say that they aren't gonna graduate from our school, so let's just take them out of the equation. So that's that's the kind of a short version of how the graduation rate works. Is they track the students in the computer system and we have to have the documentation. So every time a child enrolls in one of our schools, if they don't transfer to another North Carolina school, we have to maintain documentation to say where they went and why. And, you know, with everything with the D P I, there are certain things that have to be present within that documentation to be accepted. Anyone else? Thank you, guys.
Next, we're moving on to the public forum. Welcome to the public forum portion of our Board of Education meeting. This time is set aside for the board to hear comments on school system programs, policies and procedures. Speakers will need to follow the protocol shared during registration. The board typically will not respond to the concerns expressed. But please be assured, we will take all comments under appropriate advisement. To maximize participation, comments will be limited to three minutes per speaker. A yellow symbol will appear on the screen indicating only thirty seconds remain and the red sign will indicate the speaker has used the allotted three minutes. Speakers may not yield or give their time to other speakers or trade their time slot with another speaker. Groups with a common issue are advised to select one spokesperson. Proper decorum and civility is expected of all speakers. Speakers must refrain from personal attacks, insults, displays of temper or abuse of language directed at the board, individual board members, staff or members of the general public. In such cases, the board chair may terminate the speaker's time. We will invite to the podium those persons who have registered to speak. Please begin by stating your full name for the record. At this time, I will turn over the floor to Linda to call on our first registered speaker.
Our first speaker has declined. Our next speaker is Dr. William Murphy.
Well, am I, am I gonna go?
You can go.
Okay. Uh, to the superintendent and the school board, uh, members and all persons related to the school system. Uh, my name is William Murphy. I'm the president of Armstrong Alumni Association. Uh, this is association that's been existence about fifty years and we have about two hundred members in our association. And every year, we have certain activities. Uh, we've been existence, like I said, for fifty years. Uh, we also have been designated our association as a five oh one C three in order to receive certain tax managers. Um, we do various things in the community, support activity at the school, we help feed the community. Uh, and also, we have a a line item budget in our agenda for school members, school teachers or schools. They need anything, they can always call us, we provide those. Those type of things we've done, we provided over five hundred bottles of water to those kids when they have May Day. We provided over two hundred roses and carnations to the girls who have their uh five K in December. And also, we have issued over fifty hundred scholarships to kids who are descendants of the Armstrong Alumni Association. Uh, so my main reason coming today is to let you know that we are having our annual banquet, which will be September twenty seventh. We are Armstrong Elementary School and that's on thirty three ninety five Gunn Road in Eastover. And we would like to extend a cordial invitation to the superintendent, to the school board and the board members that will come out and partake with us during that time. We'll have politicians there, we have civil leaguers there, it'd be various people from the community. Normally have a group of about a hundred and fifty to two hundred people to attend. And we'll also have youth that will have be expat expanding, showing their talent. Those who who find it within your schedule to come out and share some time with us, uh, you can give get in contact with me, I'm Dr. William Murphy. Uh, my phone number is nine one nine eight one eight five seven eight five or email W L M R P H Y at A O L dot com. Again, thank you for allowing me to expose our school and we welcome you out to see all the great things we're doing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Barbara Snyder. Barbara Snyder. Our next speaker is Carmella McKellar Smith.
Good evening. Um, I come this evening because I mean, more than a little bit frustrated. When we look at twenty seven low performing schools, um, hopefully, there there are long bells ringing in our school system. But especially at this table, a swing from twenty three low performing schools to fifteen low performing schools to twenty seven low performing schools should have people wondering what happened. We have fifty percent proficiency in our school system. That means half of our children are not getting what they've come here to get. That's a problem. We've been hearing about this pace for about six years now. I'm not understanding. If we have this methodology, why is it every year in September, we come back and we're figuring it out again? What have we done? We know in May what our schools are looking like. The public may not recognize it, but we know what our schools are looking like. What did we do over the summer? How did we address this issue? What we know when we see these swings, these curves, fifteen schools were the outlier. That wasn't the norm. So all of the pomp and circumstance about getting there, it obviously was not something that we created some process, some some methodology around how we get our schools to the level we need to be. So so here we are again, oh, we're gonna figure it out, we're working on a plan. Well, do we create one year plans for low performing schools? Why is it, and we typically have a number of recurring low performing schools? Why would we be with a one year plan? Why would we not already have a plan in place for our schools that would extend beyond a year and we're recreating it? The other piece I'm going to leave you is what what's A P looking like? Why do we never report on A P scores? Have you looked at them? Do you know what we look like based on the state's standards of what those other schools are doing? So not only do we have these low performing schools and we can look at them and say, oh, these children just aren't achieving, but what's happening with our academically gifted children? We should be looking. Thank you.
Ms. McKellar Smith was our final speaker.
Thank you. We appreciate the involvement of community citizens and thank you for coming to share your comments with us tonight. Moving on to the adoption of the agenda, I'd like to get a motion. I make a motion to approve.
I'll second the motion.
We had a motion, motion by Ms. Brown, seconded by Mr. West, and let's vote.
I see.
Thank you. Next, we have the consent agenda. I'd like to get a motion. No, two per.
Second.
We have a motion by this one, seconded by Mr. West. Let's vote.
Did you all get the pop up?
No.
I didn't.
No.
Let's try this again.
Got it.
That's unanimous.
Thank you. Next, we're moving on to the discussion agenda. We'll start with Auxiliary Services Committee report. Thank you. Student Support Services.
We met and everything is on the consent agenda.
Thank you. Budget Finance Committee.
Same for us, everything was on consent.
Thank you. Policy Committee.
And everything is on a consent agenda.
Thank you. Curriculum Committee report.
Madam Chairwoman, we did not meet.
Legislative Committee report.
We did not meet.
Personnel Committee report.
We met, everything was on consent.
Thank you. Next is additional business, any additional business that we need to consider. We have closing items, Board Member update. Limit comments regarding school system business and school systems events only. Anyone want to say anything?
Let me second what the superintendent said was to thank everybody who helped put last night on, it was great from a production standpoint and a recognition standpoint.
Anyone else? We went to Mac Williams today. We were celebrating um, our attendance and as you can see, it's twins there. And Ms. Brown is my twin. Did you say girlfriend? Oh, dear. Anyone else?
Oh, I do, I do like to share, um, and I think um, I said something about this last time and it's about Brentwood Elementary.
Yes.
And they're, they have such great community. I think it's Aaron Lake's church. I think that community just really supports that school. And I hope, I'm putting in a plug for them, that's. I think that community just really supports that school and I hope, I'm putting in a plug for them, that so when they come up for nomination, you know, um. Y'all pick them, whoever pick them, because they support, um, Brentwood. It's so beautiful from their grounds to their. They had nothing but rave rave reviews about their community, how they just come in, they redid their teachers lounge. They they did both their teachers lounge, their bathrooms. It was beautiful, the grounds, um, just everything. And I just want to get a shout out to the Aaron Lakes community for just really embracing Brentwood and and being there for the students and the staff.
Thank you. All right, last chance. All right. As we close tonight, as board chair, I want to acknowledge the recent accountability results from N C D P I. The increase in the number of schools designated as low performing is not the news we had hoped for and we do not take it lightly. These results are a call to action. We know these numbers represent our students. Our teachers and our families and we are committed to doing the work required to improve. At the same time, it is important that we continue to reiterate some of the progress that is happening. Across the district, eighteen schools met growth expectations. Four of our schools came off the state's low performing list this year. Two of which not only raised their performance grades but also exceeded growth. Eight increased their overall achievement scores and seven improved their numerical school performance grade. These gains remind us that improvement is possible and already underway. With the new leadership of Dr. Bracy, who brings expertise in raising student achievement. We believe we have the right leader for this huge challenge. To our parents, staff and community members listening tonight, your partnership matters. Change will not happen overnight, but with persistence, collaboration, action. And a shared commitment to our students, we will see the results we all want. Our children deserve our very best and together we will deliver on that promise. A special thank you to our student representatives who shared their accomplishments and experiences with us tonight. Our next board meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, October fourteenth, twenty twenty five. We look forward to seeing you then. Please remain seated until we receive the all clear. This meeting is now adjourned.